Please stand councillors. Welcome to this unscheduled meeting of council, the 18th of November. I'd first of all like to acknowledge Swanhill Rural City Council acknowledges the elders both past and present, and the tribes of whose traditional lands form the municipality in which we meet today. Councillor Moore, the prayer please.
We beset you Lord with only granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swanhill.
Thank you councillor Moore. Any apologies or leaves of absence today? Do you have any?
No.
Thank you. Directors and officers present.
We have director Joel Lettskey, no other directors are in attendance and Sharon Minkley, Jason Minnetaker.
Thank you. Any disclosures of conflict of interest? No conflict of interest? Right, meaning to reports.
This report is to enable the report that was put on the table at last, earlier this week's council meeting, to be lifted and enable it to be dealt with at this meeting.
Could I have a motion to lift from the table?
Oh, me too.
Councillor Jeffrey, seconded councillor Moore. All those in favour?
I'd like to put forward a motion that this meeting be held in camera.
Thank you councillor, thank you councillor McFay. Can I have a second up to move in camera? Councillor King. All those in favour for moving this matter in camera? All those against?
So now we get a chance to debate that motion at all?
Yes, we will get a chance. Sorry, we will get a chance to debate that. Councillor McFay, would you like to speak to the motion?
I believe matters of HR should be discussed confidentially because they involve personnel matters and that in order to speak freely and discuss it, that no one in council or outside council should be compromised by that process. And councils have the right to debate issues in detail.
Thank you councillor McFay. Councillor King.
Yeah, thank you. Just to add to councillor McFay's motion, I agree HR matters should be particularly at this level where council is effectively the employer of the CEO, should be dealt with in camera and not debated openly in the public forum. Thank you.
Thank you councillor King. Any other speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? Councillor Jeffrey.
Yeah, I've spoken against the motion. I appreciate this as a but a HR appointing an active CEO, but we're not talking about anything that is actually quite confidential. We're not talking about reimbursement salary, special contract conditions. All we're talking about is we've gone out to market, we have an applicant that is preferred and we wish to report them to the Royal Banking CEO. But not talking about salary, not talking about conditions of employment. It's simply pointing to that to CEO and the motion that goes into that round two for hell on earth.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Councillor McFay.
Can I move an amendment to the motion, Madam Mayor?
To, yes.
An amendment to the motion? That we only have the discussion around the position relating to the councils are concerned about. The actual debate on the motion, once its motion is put, that becomes public. I believe it's important that that should be public. So the motion is happy to come into camera for the discussion. But when it becomes to the motion, the motion should be discussed publicly.
Sure.
It's all a motion.
Councillor McFay, are you happy with that amendment?
No, I don't see how they're separate. The discussion about the motion and then the motion, I guess the appointment.
Yeah, well, I'll just say your second to the point motion if you're not happy with it.
Can I have a second up? Yep. Councillor Moore will second the amendment.
I'll speak to that motion.
Thank you councillor McFay.
I understand where councillors are concerned that having some discussion in camera. I don't believe it should be in camera at all. This whole item was in our public meeting last week and people have seen this report and know what's in the report. So, but taking in mind what the councillors are asking for, I still say it's important because of the position of this CEO that we are appointing. The actual debate around the motion, not around personalities or personnel issues, just the motion itself should be done publicly. And I think it's important because it is the leader of this organisation, the leader of this municipality and the people need to know. We can't be hidden about that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McFay. Before I go to you councillor Moore, councillor King had a question.
Just a question, how does the structure of this debate now work? So, because in order to have the, this is a question.
Yeah.
In order, so if councillor McFay's motion is successful, then are we then having the debate before the motion is actually put? Or do we put the motion in the public forum and then move into camera for the debate? For the motion and then do we come out for the vote? I'm just, just because you mentioned having the discussion.
Yeah, the discussion. The point, the motion is for councillor King is the fact that some councillors appear to be concerned about the discussion around HR issues. We have the discussion in camera. Once the motion is put, that goes to a public debate. You debate the motion either way, you do not have to refer to any of those personal personnel matters that are discussed in the camera session.
In the debate, yeah.
So effectively we vote on the motion in public, in a public forum.
Yeah, so we have discussion privately, then we come out and the motion is then put. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's it. Thank you.
But there would be debate around the motion?
In camera.
So when we're talking about the discussion.
No, publicly. The debate will happen.
The debates will happen publicly, that's the idea. And the discussion around the personnel issues and that sort of stuff is in camera. That's the intent of this motion.
Yes, but the debate will happen and the putting of the motion will happen publicly like any other motion would be.
Yes.
And I certainly hope the mayor would pull any councillor up that would dive into any HR issues that were discussed in camera.
Correct. Thank you. Councillor Moore, would you like to speak to the amendment please? Okay, we'll vote on the amendment that councillor Moore has put. Councillor McFay, sorry. All those in favour of the amendment? All those against? The motion, the amendment is carried and that amendment now becomes the motion. So the motion is, I can see Sharon writing away. The motion is.
The motion we need to write's made in there basically. We go into camera for the discussion.
Yes.
Part two, we come out to debate.
So can I have, so councillor McFay is now moving the motion? That we're going to camera. Can I have a second up for that motion? Councillor Moore, thank you. Councillor McFay, do you need to speak to this motion as it is? Thank you. All those in favour?
If anybody wants to speak.
Anybody else need to speak?
Well, I do too. I'm just, sorry, point of order, point of order.
Thank you councillor King. All those in favour of the motion to move into camera? The motion is carried. Okay. Just wait until we go offline.
Thank you, councillor King.
So, after some discussion, we head back to reports. Let me bring it up. B 21.112, acting chief executive officer. Councillor King?
Miss Mayor, I'd like to move a motion as provided to Ms Lindsay for the... to go on the screen.
Mm-hmm.
If I may. That council appoint Ms Roseanne Carver as council's... We can change that to acting, sorry Sharon. Change it back to acting. As council's acting chief executive officer on a full-time basis commencing on Monday the 22nd of November 2021 or other agreed date. With the appointment reviewed on a three monthly basis until such time as an appointment for a permanent CEO is made. And second part of that motion to direct the acting CEO, Ms Roseanne Carver, to commence the recruitment of a permanent CEO.
Thank you councillor King. Can I have a second for that motion? Councillor Moore? Councillor King, would you like to speak to the motion?
Very briefly, I think it's pretty straightforward what is in there. It's not a lot different to the recommendation other than to include the other agreed date, given that Monday the 22nd is very close. Just and really, really for accountability purposes that we are making sure that we review this position on a regular basis and hence why I've included the three monthly review so that if it is some time until we can find a permanent CEO that there's some checks and balances in place to make sure that that council is satisfied that the acting CEO is undertaking the duties that we expect of her. And the second part of that motion is purely and simply that we get into gear by whatever means are required, whether that's through an agency, whether that's direct to market, whatever that looks like, to commence the recruitment of a permanent CEO to fill the role for the long term. Thank you.
Thank you councillor King. Councillor Moore, would you like to speak?
Just briefly as well. May I just read the notes here that are in the notes in the meeting? Ms Carver is a very experienced local government senior executive who has previously filled positions with Royal City Council, including director of interest structure and deputy CEO. Ms Carver was the CEO of a neighbouring council and has good knowledge of the region, municipality and organisation. Is very well placed to fill the acting CEO role.
Thank you councillor Moore, two suggestions amendments.
And the amendment being?
That transparent executive recruitment best practices processes be used.
Is this an addition or an amendment?
Oh, it's an addition, sorry.
A point three?
Another point three, sorry. In recruitment of a permanent CEO. Best practice. Recruitment processes be utilized. Would you tell your... In recruitment of our permanent... of a permanent CEO. And that all councillors be consulted throughout this process. I'll have a second.
Could I? Yes. Do you accept that amendment councillor King?
My expectation is that that would happen anyway and I don't believe that it needs to be... If we need to be writing stuff like that into our motions, then we've got a problem.
Mm-hmm.
So, my expectation with the transparent executive best practice processes will be utilized. And my understanding is that the process already allows for all councillors to be involved unless other... at the moment it is all councils are involved unless otherwise agreed. Happy to be corrected if that's not the case, but from discussions that we've had in assemblies, that's my understanding that all councillors are involved from the outset unless we agree to do otherwise. So, I don't believe this needs to be included into the motion.
Okay. Which means that it falls, doesn't it? Will we go for a second up? Can I ask for a second for this amendment? And now it lapses. So we go back to the original motion that councillor King has moved, councillor Moore has seconded and spoken to. Are there any other speakers for the motion? Councillor McPhee?
Thank you, Miss Mayor. Ellican speaking for the motion. But I'd like to say, living in a democratic society, we have to accept the majority vote, even if we do not agree. This was the case at last Tuesday's council meeting when this report to appoint an interim CEO was laid on the table. Here we are only two days later, making a recommendation that should have been made two days earlier. All councillors were given the opportunity to be providing sufficient information to make this decision last Tuesday as we have not received any new information over the past two days. All councillors, I believe, had respect and trust about previous CEO John McClendon, who himself, prior to his departure, suggested a way forward in the process to replace him, which has been followed for this report to come to council for a decision. Those councillors who voted to lay this report on the table have ignored or not listened to his advice, thereby not showing the trust and respect they allegedly had in him. I remind councillors that one of our values in our council plan is leadership, which partly states that we must show, and I quote, "strong advocacy and action." I don't believe councillors showing strong action in allowing the CEO to work from home and through this process appointing an interim CEO. John McClendon showed leadership by resigning himself. I am thankful that Ms Roseanne Carver has still chosen to accept the role of interim CEO even after observing the indecisive manner in which she has been appointed. I look forward to working with her as we go through the process of appointing a permanent CEO. Thank you, Miss Mayor.
Thank you councillor McPhee. Any other speakers?
Councillor Young? I'd like to speak. I just believe that we need to move on this issue as soon as possible for the smooth and successful operation of our council. I believe Roseanne Carver has the capability, the experience and the knowledge to do the job so we need to move on it as soon as possible.
Thank you councillor Young. Councillor Jeffrey?
Thank you. But I've got full support. The appointment of Ms Roseanne Carver as acting CEO, I think you're right. It could be reset to council for the interim group while we recruit more members.
Thank you. Any other speakers for or against the motion? Okay, we'll put it... Do you wish to close the debate councillor King?
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll put a two vote. All those in favour of the motion carry unanimously. And being that there are no more reports in this unscheduled meeting, I declare the meeting closed at 11:38 AM.